We'll call the meeting to order for the Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2018-01, January 2nd, 2016. Those who'd like to stand and join us in the Lord of Prayer and Pledge Allegiance, please do.
Father, glory in heaven. How will be thy name, thou king of Rome? How will be done on earth as it is in heaven? Give us this day and year like we did earlier. And forgive us our trespasses, and forgive those that trespass against us. And may this time be temptation, but the Lord will rule you all. For thine is your kingdom, and the power and glory forever. Amen.
The Lord is with you, my friends, and thy kingdom is with you. In thy great kingdom, thy kingdom is thy kingdom. One nation, under God, indivisible, the Lord is its justice and law.
Good evening, Mr. Taylor. First item on the agenda, entertain a motion to approve legislative minutes from December 12th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the legislative minutes from December 19th, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from December 5th, 2017, in reference to Hidden Pond Subdivision.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes on December 5th, 2017, in reference to supplemental lease agreement.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those, any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from December 5th, 2017, in reference to the Personnel Manual.
So moved.
Second? Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from December 5th, 2017, in reference to the Wycomico County Economic Impact Scholarship.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Good evening, Mrs. Hurley, how are you?
Good evening, Council President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We do have one change to the agenda this evening, and that is the Urban Services Commission Resolution Number 01, 2018, will be discussed in a work session following the legislative session, and the updated agenda is on the council table. The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on Resolution Number 01, 2018, to remove a forest conservation easement consisting of approximately 17.3 acres, more or less, located along the northerly side of Walnut Tree Road and the westerly side of Camp Brown Road in the Hidden Pond Subdivision. A public notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing would be held this evening.
Thank you. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 01, 2018. If you had any comments you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please, state your name and your county of residence and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 01, 2018. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 01, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution Number 02, 2018, approving a supplemental lease agreement between Wycomico County, Maryland, and the United States of America for approximately 982 square feet of office space for the FAA Field Service Station at the Salisbury-Ocean City-Wycomico Regional Airport to provide for a two-year extension to the current lease term. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing would be held this evening at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 02, 2018. If you would like to make any comments in reference to this, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 02, 2018. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 02, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, the next item for business is the audit presentation by Peg Crawl and Stern.
Good evening. I'd also like to mention Vice President of the City Council, Jack Heath, is here tonight, led happy Jack. And we have the Intergovernmental Affairs Liaison for the Eastern Shore for the Governor's Office, Funky Lufman. Thank you for being here, Funky. Jack, did I, what did I say? Sorry, Jack, President. Sorry about that.
Hadn't, hadn't make a call, right? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President. Sure. Good evening. My name is Mike Kleger. I'm a partner with Pete Kess and Company. And joining me this evening is Ashley Stern. She's the manager in charge of the county's audit. You should have, hopefully, had received a draft copy of the financial statements prior to today's meeting. A little late reading over the holidays, I'm sure. If you've got any problems during this week, that would be good, good to read that. But we had also previously delivered a draft of the financial statements and the reports with management and the finance department prior to tonight's meeting, so everyone's had a chance to review those. And the adjusting entries that we made and proposed have been approved. Our purpose tonight is to present the audit results, mention some of the key highlights, and then, of course, answer any questions you might have if there are any, if there're, occasionally, there's some follow-up questions prior, after tonight's meeting, we'll be glad to answer those, too. Just contact us, and we'll be glad to get back to you. I would like to start with the report in the financial package, which is on pages one through three. Page one and the top of page two of the audit report is basically covers management's responsibility for the financial statements, as well as the auditor's responsibility to report on those financial statements and issue an opinion. And the opinion paragraph is actually in the middle of page two. And I'm happy to report that our opinion on the county's financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2017, is unmodified, and this is also referred to as a clean audit opinion, and is the highest level of assurance that we can provide as auditors. An unmodified opinion means that the financial statements present fairly the financial position of the county in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Following that report is, on pages four and five, is a report on internal controls and compliance matters. Unlike the audit report, this is not an opinion on internal controls and compliance matters, but rather is a report of any findings or weaknesses noted in any audit based on our audit testing. Once again, I'm happy to report that we did not find any material weaknesses or compliance matters that need to be reported during this year's audit testing. So that's kind of a summary of the two reports that are in there, very similar to last year's. If you read, kind of compare the last year to this year, you'll see the wording is virtually the same. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ashley to cover some of the financial highlights.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm actually just going to work out of the blue packet that you've got. It's, just shows the detail of the slides, a little bit clearer than needing to look up on the screen, so I'm not going to ask you to flip through any pages, because I know you have a brief book with different page numbers than what are in our actual balance statements. The first item that you see in front of you, or the first graph that you see, actually has to do with your general fund equity. I wanted to point out that you've seen an increase in your general fund equity over the, or fund balance over the past five years. From 2016 to 2017, you saw a $2.7 million increase in your fund balance. This shows the health of the organization or government. However, unassigned actually decreased slightly, and that's just due to the required classifications of the fund balances. There's five different classifications within that, within fund balance, but overall, it grew significantly, and a lot of that depends on timing. We've also seen a steady increase over the past five years, which shows a positive growth for the, for the countywide. The next graph you'll see is your general fund revenues, and if you're in the packet, I'm actually kind of towards the middle. Joe, I saw that you. In, in 2016 to 2017, you saw a $5 million growth to $136 million in your general fund revenues. Most of that growth was seen in both your property taxes, as well as your income taxes. We saw an increase in $2 million from your income taxes from 2016, as well as a $1 million increase in property taxes. And property taxes include both your real estate taxes and your personal property taxes from 2016. In comparison to the budget, we actually saw that total revenues were, came in higher than the budget by about $7 million. Specifically, income taxes actually came in higher than budgeted by 4.7 million, and other taxes, which include your real estate and your property taxes, came in higher than budgeted by 1.3 million, so a positive note on your revenues. The general fund expenditures is the next graph that you'll see. Expenses actually increased from 2016 due to benefit costs, including hospitalization, healthcare, as well as workman's comp, debt service cost increase, as well as various capital costs that were budgeted to increase. Expenses actually came in under budget, so to the favorable side, by $2.8 million. If you're looking for a detail of that, that can be found on page 129 of the physical copy of the statements that you have, just for further reference.
Actually?
Yes?
Question?
Yeah.
On, on the revenues, general fund revenues, do you track, or I'll pay attention to the regional revenues of other counties, is this, is this a trend, you know, in the region that most counties are seeing?
Regional meaning like Somerset, Worcester, Dorchester?
The shore.
The income tax revenues, we did see an increase otherwise, but we don't necessarily, I don't have the figures, but I can get them for you. I have all of them in our work papers.
Yeah.
There is a subsequent budget resolution that you'll see within the financial statements. It's not actually reflected in the budget number, so when I'm referring to the expense budget, it doesn't include that most recent budget resolution. We also have a chart kind of showing exactly what percentages where the county's money is being spent. Thirty-six percent of the expenditures is actually spent in education, but that doesn't include the debt service for the education, just education expenses in general. Fifteen percent in public safety, 11 percent for the detention center, and about 11 percent for the general government activities as well.
What would it be if you included the debt service and education?
Off the top of my head, I don't know the percentage. For, we also wanted to take a look at a couple enterprise funds, just to give you a trend over the last five years, draw some things to your attention. On the next chart, you actually have solid waste, or the solid waste department or fund. We saw a positive increase over the past five years. We've seen an increase in revenues there, as well as an increase in the operating income over the past five years. If you're looking at that graph, we saw 2013, 2014, we're actually operating at a loss, whereas it has thus changed in the past three years to have an operating income. We also have the airport five-year trend in front of you. One of the things that I want to caution you when looking at the airport and, as well as the Civic Center that I'll show you next, is grant revenue. Grant revenue you'll see as a one-time year, a one-year thing. You'll see the revenue that gets recognized in one year, but then you'll see the subsequent expenses for depreciation in the years to follow. So when you're looking at the operating income or operating loss, or the change in net position, to be mindful of the revenue from the grants that were actually recognized in previous years. That's the case for 2016 versus 2017 for the airport. There was grant revenue in 2016 that was for 2017 expenditures, like depreciation for capital improvements. So thus, you saw a change, a positive change in your net position in 2016, but actually a decrease in your net position for 2017. Civic Center has a similar caution, where we've seen some grant revenues or non-operating revenues, including the transfer from the general fund to the Civic Center. That is included in our non-operating, so over the past three years, you've seen a difference in your change in net position or your, your net income for, for other terms. This past year, you actually saw a $1.2 million decrease in your net position, and a lot of that has to do with recognizing depreciation for this year, where you've had capital expenses for previous years. The small packet that you have in front of you is actually our auditor's communications, and I want to run through a few things that are in there. The first letter that you see is our management letter. These are our friendly comments to suggestions that we have that to be brought to the council's attention. The first comment has to do with the inventory at Rhodes and Solid Waste. We had, the year-end counts weren't done within a timely manner, and the adjustment was needed to be made. However, there has been a subsequent new policy that is implemented. There was a count done on December 31st, and there'll be quarterly counts from here on out to help fulfill that requirement. And this solely has to do with the timing of when personnel have been there. They're still, they're still looking for personnel out of their roads. We also had a comment about encumbrances. We did see an improvement in the reporting process of encumbrances. However, some departments had purchase orders that still need to be closed at the beginning of our audit, so we wanted to bring that to council's attention. Our last comment is a required comment through our auditing standards, has to do with the schedule, schedule of federal expenditures. There were a few changes that needed to be made to that, thus were required to report it to governance or to the council, but we expect those changes not to need to be made in the future. The second letter that you're seeing is our required communications with those charged with governance. I'm happy to say that we had no significant deficiencies during the audit, no major problems, issues with timing, and all required reports have been filed. I'd like to take this moment to really thank the council, as well as the executive staff, the finance department, as well as all county personnel who've had to suffer through our audit, you know, this year. It's not necessarily the most fun process for them, but, you know, thank you to everyone for all your help. Is there any questions?
Joe, I can answer your earlier question concerning the debt service payments. About eight, looks like about 80, 85 percent of that is for the Board of Ed.
Of our debt service.
Yes.
So if you add that into the, into the pie.
Yeah, that would add another.
Of course, you'd have to, you'd have to have debt service for everything, because we probably have debt service.
That's correct. Yeah, and the breakdown of debt service is actually on page 133 of the financial statements, to kind of list what's the county and what's the Board of Ed, just to kind of address that question you'd answered earlier.
The other question I had, we're looking at about a million dollar increase in operating expenses at the Civic Center. Was there any explanation for that?
Operating expenses actually include depreciation as well, so part of that is the increase in depreciation, which might be better if that's detailed, otherwise, because mostly depreciation's considered not operating. However, you're required to report that as operating, so there was an increase in depreciation. But there was also additional repairs and maintenance costs that insurance proceeds are actually recognized as non-operating, and that was about $200,000, so quite a, quite a bit, unfortunately.
Right. Any questions? Mrs. Hurley, did you have any questions?
I do have a couple, actually. On the property tax revenue, the report mentions that there was a decrease of $16,399 from FY '16 levels, which was mostly due to the county's five-year phase-out of the business inventory tax. In comparing fiscal year '15 and '14, there was a 90 percent change increase. Do you recall why there was a 90 percent increase that year?
I do not, but I will get back to you on that.
Okay. The other question I had was on the management discussion and analysis. The new revenue for fines and forfeitures is down 40.7 percent, and it looks like it's been decreasing for five years. Do you know a specific reason as to why that is?
I'm, I'm actually going to defer and see if, Don, do you happen to know anything off the top of your head? I have nothing off the top of my head. I, I will double-check into that, Laura.
Okay, that's all I have.
My guess is we're not pursuing that. In other words, if the fine, if a fine has been issued to some degree, we're not pursuing that, I guess that would be, that would, because it may involve litigation. From what I understand, I think we were not litigating some of those fines that were being assessed.
That might be.
Which I think is a concern.
Did you have any else? Anything else?
That's it for now. Thank you.
Counsel? Any other questions? We'll probably have a work, work session sometime in the future here, as we get a chance to more thoroughly. Yeah, as I said, we'll be glad to address any specific questions after today's meeting. Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Resolution Number 03, 2018, confirming the appointment of Ola Kay Metacraw to the AMO Appeals Board.
Entertain a motion to, to approve Resolution 03, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 04, 2018, authorizing the county executive to execute on behalf of Wycomico County a project agreement for a loan in the amount of $96,287 plus $4,408 for technical and administrative services from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for the Cove Road Beach Shore Erosion Control Project. This project is shown in the capital improvement program for fiscal year '19, and the council has previously had a work session on this project.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 04, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? As Mrs. Hurley said, we did have a work session on this. Any, okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 04, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, the next item for business is Resolution Number 05, 2018, authorizing the county executive to execute on behalf of Wycomico County a project agreement for a loan in the amount of $200,989 plus $8,491 for technical and administrative services from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for the Roing Point Shore Erosion Control Project. This project is also shown in the capital improvement program for fiscal year '19, and council had a work session on this project as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 05, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 05, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. If you're following the agenda, you will note that, as Mrs. Hurley noted prior to the beginning of the meeting, that the discussions in reference to the Urban Services Commission will not be held as a resolution, that will be held as a work session later on in the meeting. Mr. Taylor, good evening.
Good evening, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
We have one bill for introduction tonight, Legislative Bill 2018-01, introduced by the Council President. It is an act to repeal the current Chapter 133 of the Wycomico County Code entitled Dogs and Other Animals, and enact a new Chapter 133 titled Animal Control. Just without getting into the weeds, obviously, it's a complete replacement of what was in the code already, which was, I think, generally referred to as the animal control ordinance, even though it was called Dogs and Other Animals. I won't get into the weeds, but one thing I might point out is that the definition under the old act of a domestic animal, in other words, the act that's being, the ordinance that's being repealed, was an animal of a tamed species commonly kept as a pet, such as a dog or cat. Under the new ordinance, under this bill, a domestic animal would have that same first part, an animal of a tamed species commonly kept as a pet, only the new language would be including cats, dogs, cows, fowl, ferrets, horses, or swine. So at least in looking at it on the surface, it possibly is broader in that sense than the old ordinance. Now, I can say this, I mean, when I grew up, our cows and hogs weren't considered pets, so I don't know what exactly this means, whether it means the entire species or only, for example, a pet pig. So let's, I just point that out, because that is a difference. Now, we'll get into the rest of the weeds on the ordinance, because there are a lot of them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor. What I, what I would suggest tonight is only the introduction. Certainly, if you want to present the council with a memo to that effect between now and when we actually vote on, on the legislative bill formally, then that would be beneficial. Okay? Great. Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the introduction of Legislative Bill 01, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, introduction of Legislative Bill 01, 2018 passes. Mrs. Hurley?
Yeah, we can have a public hearing on February the 6th.
February the 6th.
At 6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM. Okay, so I know there are many of you here tonight that are interested in this, so this will be, the public hearing for this bill will be February the 6th at 6:00 PM. At that time, I'm guessing, no unforeseen surprises, the council will probably vote on that legislative bill. Maybe, there may be some amendments between now and then, if any suggestions might come before us. If you do have those suggestions, I would suggest you do that now as opposed to the public hearing. That would give the council more time to review it, and of course, Mr. Taylor, what you suggested tonight, we certainly would want to take into consideration as well. So the public hearing again will be February 6th, you said, right?
That is correct.
6:00 PM. All right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any public comments you would like to make, come to the podium, please, state your name and your county of residence, and whatever your concern might be. Yes, sir? Yes, thank you.
My name is Stephen Wolf, and I have a concern. I live in Mobile Home Park. It's called Cedarhurst Mobile Home Park, and it was just bought out by investors out in New York and Florida, and our Christmas present from them was they doubled our rent. We have a lot of people out there who are 70 years of age and older, there are a lot of sick people, cancer, and they could just barely make ends meet now. And I'm one of them. I moved out there so I could retire peacefully without any additional expenses, and with this increase in rent, I can't afford anything, and neither can anybody else. So my concern is, I'm out here pleading with the council to present some kind of a referendum to prevent this from ever happening again, because there's absolutely no laws in Maryland or Wycomico County to prevent investors like this to do things to the, to the county residents. And we have other people from our residents here, I don't know if they want us to add anything to it or not. Want to add anything?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
But anyhow, I just, we would like to have a referendum up to prevent this, like, put a cap on what they can do, because that's, that's ridiculous, almost double the rent.
Well, I appreciate your comments. We, we did receive your letter, and want to thank you for that, and had Mr. Taylor review it, and just roughly, but we'll, we'll review it further and get back to you, probably with a formal statement letting you know what the council's position is.
Okay. But like I say, I appreciate it, because something's really got to be done, because senior citizens out there, they're, they're basically going to be put out on the street.
I understand.
And that's not, that's not right.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good evening, my name's Carmen King. I'm also a resident at Cedarhurst Mobile Home Park. I would also like to second his comment in regards to considering a cap for the amount of the increase that landlords are able to do, and then also to take into consideration the amount of time for them to notify, notify you of such. We got 30 days' notice. It was a hard hit. And also, I would... And also, I would, I know that there's a Mobile Home Act for Maryland in regards to the lease that they require the residents of the Mobile Home Parks to, to sign. It's pretty clear to me in the lease that they have the ability to possess your, your home. I think that needs to be looked at a little bit further. It's very threatening to an individual, especially when we're buying the, the home that's on the lot, we're just leasing the, the lot that it's on. I, for myself, can say that it's a little disheartening to me to know that I'm, I'm buying something that I thought I was going to be living in with having to sign an agreement that allows them to come in and take my possessions and/or my home. So I think that also is something that should be looked at as well.
Thank you, Ms. King. Any other public comments?
I just want to ask very.
No. Seeing none other. And that concludes public comments, council comments. All right, hang on a second, because I got to find my piece of paper. Change policies where I have to be very specific on how we close the meeting. Entertained a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into an open work session before the Urban Services Commission.
Show move.
Then to reconvene is the county council for open work sessions, followed by a closed work session to discuss personnel pursuant to the general provisions, Article Section 3-305b1, to protect employee confidentiality. Do we have a motion?
Show move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Meeting's adjourned. We're now, I guess we'll do the urban, well, let, wait a second. I think we'll put Urban Services last, so that everybody that's here can, is that, I would think that would be best, right?
Okay.
Because everyone here is most likely on all the other work sessions.
That's true.
First item on the, on the open work session is council manic district map software presentation. Mr. McKenzie, I saw you walk in. There you are.
He's going to need about five minutes to set up for his presentation.
Oh, yes? Good evening. How are you?
Fine, thanks. How are you all?
I'm great.
Is that good? If I just, just move this out, let me see.
Yeah.
Good.